Exactly, 7 o'clock. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Lemmonster School Committee. Our first school committee meeting of the 2018-2019 school year. We're at Apple Seeds. If everyone could please rise and let me give you a pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Read our school committee's statement. This committee represents the needs of all Lemmonster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each other, for each of our schools, and support high-quality public education in Lemmonster. Having said that, we're going to open up for a public forum. Would anybody like to come up and address the school committee? A second time, would anybody like to address the school committee tonight? Please step forward to the microphone. And one final time, does anybody wish to address the school committee tonight? All right, having nobody interested in doing so, we're going to move on to communications. Superintendent? We don't have any communications this evening. Okay. How about a superintendent's report?
Absolutely. Excellent. So first and foremost, I want to say welcome back. This feels much better when we are in the flow of school and we have our routines and rituals down pat. So welcome back to our team. The school system has been extremely busy over the summer. We have been enrolling, I would like to say minute by minute, if not second by second. We have people out the door at our enrollment center. We are hoping to accommodate as many families with intra-choice. There are some special circumstances that we're trying to address, but at different grade levels, we are at capacity. One such capacity right now is in our kindergarten. We are already in enrollment over where we ended last year with two weeks to go. So that's good news-ish, but we are constantly trying to reconfigure. We want to accommodate as many families as we can, and we also have an insurmountable people trying to get into our district. So we're taking care of our residents first, and then we'll look outside the district after that. The second piece is around transportation. Bus routes are out. They're in several places. They're on our website. They should be publicized. Mr. Frato has been working very closely with First Student, and if you haven't noticed, they are practicing their runs right now. So it's nice to hear the buses up and down the streets. We've had a few revisions, and it's just in service of students. We are at the same service level as we were in FY18, and we will continue to rework it to accommodate as many families as we can. And the last piece is our buildings are about 95% ready to go for August 29th. We had summer programming in every single building this summer, whether it was academic, sports, the arts, readiness programs. We had students beyond what we expected, and it was really nice to see that our students stayed engaged with our district throughout the summer. So custodians have been working extremely hard to make sure that those doors will be open, our buildings are clean, and they are safe and secure buildings moving forward. So we're looking for a fantastic FY19 school year, and we're going to move forward as a team. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the superintendent's evaluation. I wanted to let everyone know that we have compiled the superintendent's evaluation. I did just get an additional evaluation today, so I'm going to just incorporate that with the information that we have already. But so at our next meeting, we'll actually pass out the synopsis of the evaluation, but just to let everyone know that it was extremely positive. People were feeling that Superintendent Paula Deacon here has hit the ground running. She has provided very clear communication, transparency, has set attainable goals. She has worked tirelessly with other people in the finance committee and the business department to really get our financial affairs in order. So we really are starting this year very solid, and we were able to close out everything from last year. So that was certainly noted on, I think, everybody's evaluation, so we appreciate that. Some of the other things that were brought forth were really engaging with not only staff, but parents, students, community members, your ability to respond to inquiries in a timely manner. And Isabel, I don't know whether I missed anything, but I think you covered the base.
Yeah, I mean, it was positive, and so overall, it was extremely, extremely positive. So we appreciate all your hard work, and we recognize that you really did a lot of restructuring of personnel in central office and really streamlining, you know, sort of the whole process. Staff, making sure that we knew who was where and in what building and who was reporting to whom. So those were big undertakings. So we appreciate all that you've done, and we are looking forward to a great year this year, and we're very excited to move forward and really focus on student achievement. So I think that's our next biggest goal. So once we incorporate the last person's stuff, then we'll hand out the synopsis for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the support.
Thank you. Do you mind if I move forward?
Yes, absolutely.
So with that being said...
In a segment, right?
And I didn't want to be presumptuous, but I really felt that I needed to frame the vision and the focus for the FY19. So within your packet are proposed goals, and it is definitely a draft. I wouldn't close this out without your approval, without the feedback from the evaluation. I have been working with my cabinet and my leadership team around these goals, and they are in alignment with the superintendent rubric. But it's truly the time to move us first and foremost in, number one, our goal around teaching and learning. This is, we're on the cutting edge of a change in Massachusetts. We're the new commissioner of education, and so putting teaching and learning back in the forefront is where we need to lead every one of our staff members. We have a new accountability system. Not only do staff need to understand that, but it's important that our community understands the ramifications. We've worked with our leadership team around that new accountability system today, and there are changes that really could impact how we do business. So first and foremost, not just teaching and learning, we want exemplary teaching and learning. We also have a goal around secure and safe schools. I want families to understand that that is always in the forefront. We have been working with the local departments to ensure that our schools are physically safe all the time, and we continue to look at resources and materials and drills and protocols. But we also want to ensure that students' social-emotional safety is protected. That's one of the biggest impacts for us. And also the academics, our needs being met. When that tripod isn't fully closed, that's when people get disconnected. We don't want students disconnected. So we're looking at the whole child. The third piece to the draft goals is around fiscal responsibility when making decisions. We are not just going to buy products and programs and innovation without doing some research behind that. We have a few projects out there right now that need to be addressed, and we want to make sure that our monies are going in the proper place. And overall, our last goal is around communication. I need to know about it. Somebody needs to communicate it. We all need to understand what the undertaking is for FY19. We have an opportunity to really push Lemmonster Public Schools in the right direction. Watching that graduation in June really set us at such a high bar that every student should be afforded what almost 500 students have left us with. And I am more than excited to know that our kindergarten class is blowing up. So we want to hold them for 13 years. We want to show what Lemmonster is about. So I am looking for feedback. I ask that you feel free. There's nothing that you could say that would hurt me, or maybe I'm not thinking about this. I really want it to be a collaborative process so that I know that I can put my teammates in line to move the ship forward with me. So any consideration, I would truly appreciate. Wendy?
I just want to say I read your letter. That was fascinating. And I just want to say that I think it speaks volumes that you didn't just say professional practice, but you put passion in front of there. So our students and our teachers and your team, you have a passion for getting this right and doing this right, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for picking up on that. Anybody else have any comments on the superintendent's goals?
I think as I agree with Wendy. She's very upfront with her manner and her methodology. It's a brother pressure. I love it.
Thank you.
I think, do you... Just, I think what you have, what you've created here is spot-on. I think it's going to lead us in a good direction and improve. I mean, we've come out of a bad time, and we're now moving forward, and I think these address that.
I was going to say that the goals are very easily recognizable and delineated and very clear. I guess, you know, there's clear expectations so that there's things that we can quantify, which is extremely helpful for us as a committee. And going forward, you know, your next evaluation will do a midterm based on your goals, which we need to approve tonight as a school committee. But I think, you know, that you've incorporated all the essential pieces that really are going to help our school system be the best it can be and really, like you said, move forward and really do some great things for our students. So that's wonderful. So do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion that we accept the superintendent's goals as presented.
I'll run. Okay, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Nope, the motion carries. Great, thank you. We look forward to a great working year with you. All right, so moving right along, could you talk to us about an update on summer hiring? And welcome, your first official meeting as assistant superintendent.
Thank you very much. Excited to be here.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Get the ground running.
And we're ready, and we're all excited for the opening of school. We really are. Just wanted to say a few words about the report we just submitted. First off, it represents a great deal of work by the administrators and their respective interview teams. People have been working hard all summer, and this is really the first piece of that work that you can see how it's come to fruition. It represents 53 employees in total that have been processed from June through August 14th of last week. Roughly half of these are members of the teachers bargaining unit, and nearly all of them participated last Thursday in the new teacher induction program that Renee Koska has run. It's important to note that all of them have signed contracts and had their coreage process, so we're continuing to focus to make sure we're welcoming people that are properly vetted and safe to enter our schools. And a nice thing is that a great majority of them represent significant cost savings over the people that they've replaced. The HR office continues to process an average of three to five new employees every day, so this is very much a work in progress. While we stand around 53 right now, we'll probably end up around 80 by the start of school. But Tocna and Vickering, we're in good shape to make sure they're all processed to begin the school year. And that's really the great news, is that the schools are really ready to go, and there are only a few lingering positions that still need to be filled. I think most importantly, we mentioned a little bit earlier, we're talking about a committed, talented, and passionate group of educators, really excited to see a lot of the teachers that we hired, our professionals, tutors, and other support staff. So it looks like it's going to be a great group to be working with moving forward, and we're really excited about it. I just wanted to thank in particular, you don't know until you sit somewhere to see the amount of work that happens in human resources. And I have to say, we've been extremely fortunate with Ann Vickering, Juan de Toledo, who's new to the group, but was wonderful. And then we had some treehouse help from Julie Junyanzio, and just wanted to thank those three individuals because they really are putting in full days and do a wonderful job to make sure people get fair offers, but they're treated well, and that we're going to be ready to start school in a great position.
Jim, I'm just wondering, I know last year the mayor, and I don't know whether he has expressed anything yet this year, but wanted to ensure that he knows, you know, sort of all the positions that are being hired so that it coincides with their records for pre-termit and other kinds of benefits. So I just want to make sure that once this is all sort of said and done, that we can give them a finished product so there's no questions about staffing patterns and whether we have more people or less people than last year and those kinds of things.
Absolutely. Screen times, I was talking about both capturing that and then also really trying to get some more hard figures on the cost savings that we've experienced because I think that those have been substantial.
Yeah, and that would be extremely helpful and important, I think, for us because I know a lot of work goes behind the scenes about that issue, but it doesn't necessarily always come to the forefront.
Absolutely.
So are we going to be able to open school with a full complement of teachers, staff?
At this point, I would anticipate yes. I mean, there are always some changes that happen towards the end of the school year that we don't anticipate. People either move or they take positions elsewhere, and we're left having interviews later than we wanted to. I think one of the nice things, the reason why I mentioned it about these 53 employees, about half of them being teachers, you can see that's where the focus was for principals and other administrators as far as when they hired folks. And so the good news is we really have very few teaching positions left. These are traditionally some of the more challenging positions. But I know we're in constant contact with the principals, and they're in contact with us, that there are good plans in place, and I do feel like they're going to be able to wrap that up when we start school next week.
And custodians, we've got all custodians in every building.
Yeah, we, there are a couple, just specifically in the custodians, we have a couple openings in the junior positions. However, we've also had an increase in our substitute custodians, so we have about a group of five. And so we've actually been communicating, I've been talking to Tony Schibarassi, and we've also been talking to their union. And the anticipation is that we'll be filling those positions by the end of September. The reason why we're doing that is we want to give everyone an equal opportunity, and you can base it a little bit on their work performance that they've done for us over the last four or five weeks to help get our schools ready. And so it's really important, those initial hires, that you make the right decisions. And so, but we are going to be in good shape about that.
Good. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Richard? Great, thank you very much for that question. And keep us updated as we move along. All right, so at this point, we're going to move on to the subcommittee reports. Wendy, would you like to give us a report on the finance?
I mean, policy. Yep. Okay. So first, I wanted to just welcome everybody back, and I just want to remind the families that at the end, the last three or four meetings at the end of the last school year, we reminded people we made a change to the, for this school year, to the fees for extracurriculars, and we did away with the exemptions for everything except for middle school music and chorus. If both schools, if one was able to fit in during the day and the other didn't, that was the only exemption. But I also wanted to make sure people remember we reminded you and are reminding you again that it's a staggered structure, and there is help. If it is a financial burden and it will prevent your kids from taking part, you just need to reach out to somebody in your building or to somebody down in the district, but there is help, and so don't let that stop your kids from participating.
Do we have a point person? Because previously it was Lorene, and she's moved to a different position. Is it automatically going to be the athletic director, or is it going to be somebody else?
That's a really good question.
I was in the building my last...
If Laura's not here, who would gladly do that?
What happens if you don't show up?
I'll get back to you there.
Right. I mean, it would be helpful. Your students' teacher know, and they can help you figure out who to speak to also.
I mean, I think it's, you know, the majority of the activities are at the high school level, so it would be helpful because they have so many different teachers to everybody tell who the point person is. Clearly, at the elementary and middle school levels, you know, certainly the principal probably would make sense, but...
Right, so, yeah, and remember that the fee is not per activity, it is per student.
And it's for the year.
And it's, yes, it's for the entire activity.
Yes.
Okay. So for a first reading in your packet tonight, there are some, we were just going through and cleaning up language and just double-checking all of our policies, and so just presenting them to you for the first reading pending, a couple of them need to be run by legal for language, and others we had to clean up and modernize. So I'm just suggesting that, presenting them to you for your approval of a first reading pending these minor changes.
So can I have a motion to, from the state?
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
The minutes and also...
Not the minutes. The policies with the corrections.
It's the F and G, yes.
Yep, with the corrections that will be made. We're updating some of the policies. We're cleaning up some of the language, updating, modernizing, and the legal has to just double-check the couple, make sure they're still in, because some of these are 10 years old, make sure they're still in compliance of the Mass General law.
Can I have a second? Just a second? All of those in favor? Okay, opposed, the motion carries. That is our first reading, and we will bring it forward at our next school committee meeting for a second reading with the corrections and everything.
As long as it's back from the... And then in your packet, also in the back, are the ones that I presented before. For the first reading, it's CBA, CGC, and CHC. The length, there were some minor changes.
This is the second reading?
Yes, this is the second reading, right. And everything has been cleaned up, and so now I am presenting them to you for final approval and recommend that we do so.
Okay, so are you making a motion?
I make a motion that we accept CBA, CGC, and CHC as corrected and in your packets for a second reading. Yes.
Okay, no second reading. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Wendy?
I think that is it.
Okay. Mike, was there anything from the finance subcommittee yet?
We haven't met yet. Our next meeting is September 11th.
Great, thank you. Wendy, would you like to look at the minutes from June 18, 2018? Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, so I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from the June 18 meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll say nothing.
Does anybody have any questions, omissions, errors that they would like to point out? Okay, no discussion. With that being said, good job, Chris, for no mistakes. All those in favor?
Give her standing ovation.
Anybody opposed? The motion carries. All right, at this point, we're going to, well, I was just going to explain why we're doing it. So at this point, we are actually going to go into executive session to discuss, you know, some items, and we will be returning.
Before that, it's not on the agenda, but it was in our packet about a course change at the high schools. I think we need to address that, and maybe we should address that now.
Well, we could do that under new and old business.
Okay, because it's not on the agenda, but it was in our packet. So I've got a question about, so...
Yeah, so we are returning, but we are requesting that everyone sort of step out of the room for us for a few minutes while we go into executive session. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session under chapter 39 of the Massachusetts general laws for the purpose of contract negotiations with LEA, secretarial, and both custodial unions. We will be returning.
So we're back in session, and thank you for rejoining us. At this point in time, we're going to move on to conflict of interest slash disclosure. Paula?
Oh, so we have two pieces this evening. One is a request from Ann-Margaret Tessie Mitchell, the principal, to hire an employee related to an administrator. She has submitted a letter saying that she would like to hire Mrs. Cara Riley as their top candidate as an ESL tutor in early childhood. She has been our substitute in both long-term and daily capacities for the past three years. On full disclosure, she is the wife of Dr. Jim Riley, the assistant superintendent, so I am looking for a vote in favor of hiring Cara Riley.
And she's already been employed with us for three years.
And Jim will not be directly supervising her in any way, so...
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. And to approve the hiring of what's...
Cara Riley.
For this position of the ESL tutor.
Okay, any discussion, comments? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Great, thank you.
We have a second request. We need to ask the committee to approve the FY19 calendar changes due to the change in MCAS dates. We had three half-days, one in February, March, and June, and MCAS dates came after we approved this. So we moved them from Wednesday half-days up to Monday half-days. So we need to inform our parents, and we also took a professional development day away. So the last day of school is now one day closer. So instead of June 14th, we are June 13th. So I'm looking for a vote to make those calendar changes.
I'll make a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
Okay, any comments?
I just want to double-check that. So instead of the 14th and 21st, it's the 13th and 20th.
Yes, okay. Great, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
All right, so at this point in time, we are going to discuss new or old business. During our executive session, we had a vote to accept the custodial contracts for both custodial units, unions. So we're very, very pleased to have worked cooperatively with them and come up with an agreement, and that was a positive vote by the school committee for both unions. So congratulations. We want to... And the vote was eight to zero, as you nailed us?
Seven to zero.
Seven, we only have seven.
I can't count.
Seven. It's a good thing we have Chris, he's honest here.
I tell you, you.
But we wanted to specifically thank Nona in particular, but everyone who had any part in the negotiation committee. They have worked tirelessly throughout the summer to bring things to fruition, so we're very pleased, and thank you very much for your hard work. Paula's, Nona's, I think some of the administrators out in our public here, Wendy, Cody have also stepped in.
Steve, Jim.
Steve, Jim, and Jen. Awesome job. Thank you, everyone, for devoting so much time and energy. It's something that's very crucial to the smooth-running of our school system, so we're excited about that. And is there anything else that we need to discuss in old or new business?
I just wanted to say that over the summer, the 21st century program continued from both middle schools, and they worked together, and the kids had an amazing, amazing time. And they ended with, part of, one of the projects that they did was they had duct tape and cardboard, and they had to build boats that would sail and hold people, hold the kids. And this was a STEM project they worked on the entire rest of the program. And then they, they ended the program the last day at Lemmonster St. Barres, and they had a boat race, and most of the boats actually were floating and holding the kids. But they all, there's a video of it on the Facebook of the public school. The kids are having an amazing time. They did the boats, they learned cooking and nutrition, they did their summer reading, including learning to take notes while they were reading to be able to take a quiz on the books later on. Some of the older kids going from the eighth grade into the high school helped learn some job skills and some shopping and budgeting skills, when Kenny Ricker took them shopping in the supermarkets to buy the stuff for the cooking and nutrition class, and they had to compare prices and make sure they were getting the right stuff and the best deals. And every kid that I got to speak to and all the staff had an amazing, amazing time.
That sounds awesome.
So this is a great program that we have with the 21st century here, and I hope they stay with us.
Great, that's wonderful. Nona?
We need to, we've been presented with a request to add a course to the high school course of studies, program of studies. I'd just like to clarify a couple of things.
Maybe if Steve could come up?
Come on up.
Come on up. Come on down.
So it's an English course, sports and literature?
Yes.
Just...
Which I think sounds terrific because eons ago, there was a sport in literature class. Just, is this a half-year course?
Yes. Half-year semester course.
So five credits?
Yes.
And is this a, the average rank or is it a...
Yeah, average, yeah.
Okay, well, that's all my questions.
Is it a character of any particular grade or they can take it as a corrective?
Cover nine through 12. What we have found in, with some budget cuts in the past few years is that our electors have diminished a little bit, so we're trying to bring them back. And this was one that was, I threw the idea out to some people and Mr. Gruffield who designed it, I've never seen more excited in my entire life about teaching a course, so I'm excited about that.
Just reading it over, I mean, and I'm not...
I'm going to take the class.
And I'm not really...
Come on in.
I'm not really a sports person, so I found it exciting of what they're going to, you know, be challenged to do.
Kevin put a lot of time into designing it.
I think it's great. So my recommendation and I'd like to make a motion that we accept this course change and have it implemented, be implemented this year.
Yes. With your approval. I'll throw it away now. Thank you.
All those in favor? Awesome, great job, thank you. It does sound great and we look for some other creative courses to come in the future. That keeps everybody engaged. So that's wonderful. Any, I know, Chris, we've gotten like your last call for the Early Bird Raid for the conference in November for school committees and superintendents. I know we gave you a list of people, I don't know if anybody else is interested to go.
Are you going to?
And I had said yes. Are you going to go?
I'm thinking of it. How soon do I have to let you know?
Well, I'll just register the two of that because I think last year we registered some of the Early Bird and they didn't go, so why don't we just do two and then if you want to go, you can go. Later.
Does anybody else go? I mean, it's very enlightening, it's nice to network.
It really is. I went, I went one day several years ago and it really, it really was interesting.
And it really talks about sort of what's the cutting edge and what's going on and what's the new thing we need to be paying attention to and it's very timely. All right, I would encourage other people, if you can put it into your schedule, to think about attending.
In November?
Yeah. I don't know the actual...
I want to say like November 7th or 11th. I'll let you know by the end of the week.
Okay, anybody else have anything else they would like to discuss? All right, well, this is one of our quicker meetings. So with that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. A second?
All right, everybody in favor, leave.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Good start to the school year.